Call the meeting to order and could we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Ms. Darney?
Here.
Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present. Thank you.
Would you like the prayer also, Fay?
Yes, thank you.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessing on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to the community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we will start with the superintendent's update, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, on the agenda, on the superintendent's update, I will provide you with a report on our return readiness task force, which we're calling RRT. In the packet, we also did include the addendum to the Bloom Bus Contract, which we discussed at the last Finance and Law Meeting last week. And we also did include the TEA supplemental MOA for you to have. So those were placed in there as information for school committee members to have as they weren't in the packet last time we met last week. So I'll jump right into the return to readiness task force. But before I do that and turn things over to the leadership team, I'll just share with you some of the information we learned today during our call with Commissioner O'Reilly. So there has been some relief regarding MCAS for freshmen, current freshmen, who will be 10th graders next year, and juniors, who will be 12th graders next year, with regards to science. So in lieu of taking the science bio MCAS, the commissioner and Desi, they're going to allow for a transcript review. So if the student passes the call.
John, you're freezing a little bit. So Johns. I'm sorry?
His air conditioner too high, he's frozen.
I didn't know if.
Mr. Barada, can you take over?
He wants to take over for him, or? He should be right back, but.
I could try a little bit, but, right, we're advised today by Desi. Actually, they sent out a little email earlier this week and John is back.
I was wondering why this was going so smooth, you guys? I froze. Oh, so the last thing you remember me saying?
All right. They're buying dinner for all of us next time you get together. That's the last thing you said.
They're gonna look at transcripts.
Or it's a transcript review, Mr. Cabral.
Oh, wow, okay. So, in lieu of taking the MCAS, the bio MCAS makeup exam, they're going to allow for a transcript review. So if the student meets the local requirements, they will not have to take the science bio MCAS. And that'll impact 85,000 students throughout the state. In addition, 10th graders who have to take the ELA and math MCAS, the makeup will be late fall, early winter. And again, that'll be subject to change depending on what the opening, the reentry looks like when we return to school. And for our 8th graders, who are going to be 9th graders next year, they'll be back on track to begin taking the MCAS, which will be the science exam. Desi also did provide some relief regarding emergency licensure. So students or prospective teachers who failed to pass the MTO or take the MTO, they'll be able to be licensed teachers, which we anticipate they may be in need for subs or for teachers next year. In good news regarding circuit breaker, we will be allowed as written into a student's IEP. Desi's providing some funding for summer school programming, which we have begun planning for remote with the hope that we can have some in-person learning with regards to summer school. There's no update regarding the September 14th holiday. We have not received a final word in whether or not that'll be a statewide holiday or if that'll be a regional holiday. That'll change how we can potentially use that day. And they will be providing us with summer school guidance that'll help us prepare or create our programs to ensure social distancing. And sometime mid-June, we should start to receive some guidance, which will play out well with our task force. We should be planning to receive some guidance mid-June regarding what the fall will look like. The state also did mention that they are putting together a list of PPE, now again, protective gear that we need to begin purchasing, which we will plan to utilize IKEA's funding to make this purchase. And the state also mentioned that they are consulting with Ed Davis, who's the former police commissioner in Boston. You may remember Ed Davis, who was instrumental in the work around the bombing during the marathon. So he is leading a task force that's identifying the items of the PPE gear that we should plan to have in place. They're recommending that we have a three-month supply on hand when we open schools. That would include masks, gloves, thermometers, thermal thermometers, N95 masks, gowns, shields, protective shoe coverings. We need to develop a process to remove contaminated or dirty gear that our nurses or any other personnel in the school are utilizing, as well as hand sanitizer. So the state is going to assist districts with purchasing on a larger scale and also the use of state contracts. But we will be required to do the bulk of our own purchasing. So they'll identify what they're going to provide us and then provide us with a list of the items that we should purchase above and beyond what the state will provide us. And obviously, we need to get these orders in quickly. But as we've talked about in previous meetings, they're talking about a 30- to 60-day window as far as ordering now. So we plan to begin placing orders and applying the CARES funding to offset these costs. And I believe that we did talk about budget. Unfortunately, there was really no clear guidance, any new information regarding Chapter 70. Again, the House and the Senate are still working out the planning process. And it was stated by Jay Sullivan and Mr. Bell, I believe it was William Bell, that they believe it's highly unlikely that we'll have a state budget by July 1st. And they anticipate that the state will be moving along to a 1/12 budget, which will allow them time to carefully review the revenue projections and also carefully review the loss of revenue over the months of July and August, so that come fall, they can have a budget in place. So that's what we anticipate happening this summer. So as Jay Sullivan illustrated it, we're all still dancing in the dark, not to quote Bruce Springsteen, until we can figure out what those dollars are going to look like. So on our behalf, it's really a $3.5 million question. And again, we've done some projections looking at last year's Chapter 70 rates and multiplying that by the inflation factor. That's been floated around, that we would be funded to last year's, using last year's rates plus FY21 inflation factor, which would result in a $2.8 million Chapter 70 increase. But even that, I believe, is very optimistic until we have some actual hard numbers in front of us. So I did learn today, as Mrs. Moynihan and I are preparing for our budget presentation next week, that we can expect an appropriation in the amount of $88.2 million, which is what we received this year. We plan to be very creative with the use of our CARES funding to offset costs in a line item budget, such as nursing supplies, cleaning supplies, and other items that can fall under the criteria allowed by the CARES funding. And then we are also being very conservative with our revenue projections, which I think we projected close to $6 million. I think you're going to see that number probably closer to four and a half, $5 million, based on conservative projections. So based on an appropriation of 88, CARES funding to the tune of $2 million, and conservative revenue projections of about $4.5 million, we're looking at a total operational budget of just over $94 million. So we'll get deeper into the weeds next week when we share with you what we need to continue all level of services from this fiscal year to fiscal '21. And then actually, and then obviously presents you with the impact, not knowing what our Chapter 70 is, where we'll have to reduce. And then we'll work on making recommendations should the Chapter 70 come in, in any amount, whether it's 3.5 or the 2.8, all over, what items we would build back into our budget. So that is the process that we plan to present to you next week, is this is all our revenue streams, this is what we need. And obviously, these are the items we would bring back should we receive any increase in Chapter 70. So with that said, I'll quickly just highlight, in your packet, I provided you with a memo. And on the back of the memo should be the seven groups that were put in together to address the work as we prepare to re-enter for the fall. So we have one task force that'll be led by Mr. Otavio Nelli regarding transportation. Mrs. Perry will oversee operations. And I'll let Mrs. Perry speak to the work that we envision in that area of facilities. Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral. There's been a request that it might be a good idea to let people ask questions after this section of the budget piece that you just talked about. Is there a preference?
I'm fine with the wishes of the group.
So if you all would like to get that over with, maybe we can move that along and then finish the rest of it? Thank you. Mrs. Almeida? And then Mr. Pulowski?
Thank you. There's a couple of things you mentioned about the September 14th. My question to you, Mr. Cabral, is what do we normally do on April 19th?
It usually falls on vacation week, so it's no school, no work. That's a holiday. The marathon is always one during vacation week.
It's a holiday in Massachusetts, correct?
Right.
So if the marathon does get changed to September 14th, should we declare that a holiday?
That's what the state is deciding right now. So there is a bill, I believe Governor Baker, I think it was Governor Baker, who presented that September 14th be a holiday, be a statewide holiday. There's been some pushback by superintendents. For, I think I've said, shared this example before, I think Martha's Vineyard. Now, the marathon doesn't pass through Martha's Vineyard. So why should Martha's Vineyard or their schools be shut down on September 14th, knowing they're having a holiday during April vacation? So it's almost like you're going to have two holidays. So that's what some superintendents have been stating, if it could be a regional holiday, maybe those districts that are impacted because the marathon passes through their city or their town, that that would be a holiday there, no school, versus those districts that are more in the periphery, they could have that as a regular day.
Okay, because one of the concerns I heard from the teachers, some of the teachers when we had that meeting was that there's a few that run in the marathon. So are they going to be penalized because it's not going to be a holiday? How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, we could address that when we identify the two or three people who are running the marathon. I don't believe it's more than that on any given year in the school department. It's a very small number, having run the marathon myself one year. But we would address that with individuals, whether or not they utilized it. If it's not a holiday, whether or not they use it as a professional day, because we were thinking about having professional day on that day. But if it's a holiday, then it's a moot point.
Right, but if school isn't, well, okay. Because they'll lose a lot of money if they don't do it. So that's one thing. The other thing is, you know, I know it's great that we're always listening and waiting for guidance, waiting for guidance. But in my opinion, I think we should bite the bullet and be leaders. That's what we're elected for, to be leaders of our community. And I don't think that we should have to continually to wait for this guidance and guidance and guidance of what's going to be happening, or everything. We know, like when I was like reviewing our budget and looking at things and listening to what people said, I bet you, and I could be wrong, that we're going to take close to a $5 million cut, some way, shape, or form, between the revenues that we get, between school choice, between, you know, our revolving accounts, between everything. But I think that, in my opinion, it's going to be between five and six, maybe even more, million dollars. Maybe we need to look at that and see what we're going to do as far as that. I know you're going to do the budget presentation next week, but I'd like to see what $5 million in cuts would do to our district. Not that I want to make anybody panic, but I think we need to take leadership in this role and really look at what we're doing. Not the first time we've had to do this as a committee.
So that's one of the reasons why we are getting ahead in putting our task force together. And that's one of the reasons why, even though we're a city, cities and towns operate differently when it comes to the budget, because most towns are only receiving $20, $30 per student. So you're talking $40, $60, $80,000. The town manager sets the budget for the school departments. When you're in urban or municipalities such as Taunton and our neighboring urban communities, so much of our funding comes from the state level. Again, 65% of our budget is coming from the state level. So for us not to know what that number is, it makes it very, very difficult to build our budget. But we will build the budget based on the figure that I received last week and confirmed today with the city budget manager, utilizing our revenue, which is those items you mentioned. Our revenue involves our revolving funds, circuit breaker, potential carryover. Mr. Jakes, we get reimbursed by the cable commission, and we also receive McKinney-Vento reimbursement. So a conservative estimate would be about $4.5 million in revenue. Typically, we're around six. So if you put the 88.2 plus $4.5, and then we're very strategic with our CARES funding, that's around 94 and change. So there's going to be reductions.
Okay. But the state is.
We will share with you, we will share with you what those different areas that we've discussed with our principals, that they've identified. We've been doing that work with them remotely. The leadership team has done that work as well. So we will provide you different options that you can weigh in on and ultimately make those very difficult decisions based on our recommendations.
Because I know, like, the state, you know, yes, we do get a considerable amount from the state, but the state gets their money from the federal. And there's some things, I had a bunch of notes here, I don't know what happened to them. And the NSBA meeting that I had attended with Zoom, this Zoom thing gives us an opportunity to really widen our horizons. The cuts that they were seeing that were coming to the states are going to be pretty drastic. So if the state's not going to get the money from the feds, then the state's not going to give the money to the towns and the cities.
I agree.
That's the bottom line. So from what they said, I mean, at one point, they were talking close to maybe 18% cuts across the board.
Well, I think the presentation that I shared with you two weeks ago presented the best-case scenario, a 5% reduction, which was $4.2 million, and a 10% which was $8.4 million.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Pulowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral, this is a question regarding budget and funding for anything that we would have to invest to bring the schools up to par to open in the fall, given COVID-19 concerns. So if we have to invest in PPE, Plexiglas separators, anything like that, would that kind of stuff be funded completely from the CARES Act? Or would you envision some of that stuff cutting into our normal budget?
Both. So what we, again, trying to build this budget and trying to be creative with our revenue streams. If we budget $50,000, I'm using, I'm just making up numbers. So say we budget $50,000 for maintenance of buildings, I would recommend we zero the maintenance line in alignment on budget and just charge the maintenance purchases to the CARES Act. Nursing equipment, same thing, zero our nursing supply line and charge it to our CARES funding. So that would be one way to reduce our budget, utilizing the CARES funding. So I somewhat see the CARES funding almost taking the place of the Chapter 70, not knowing what that's going to be. And whatever the Chapter 70 increase is, doesn't necessarily mean it'll be in addition to the 88.2. So that 88.2 may already encompass whatever Chapter 70 increase we receive. It is my hope that some of that increase in the Chapter 70 will make its way to the school department. But again, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that they're going to be, I anticipate severe cuts to not just Taunton, but most municipalities throughout the state.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it definitely does. And I guess the reason why I'm concerned with this, and this is going to be a lot more difficult of a question, but when you consider what we might have to do to the schools in order to make it safe enough for everybody to return, not knowing what the situation's going to be with the virus versus what we would have to do to keep remote learning going in the fall, is there a point at which what we'd need to do to the schools is so costly and so, like, prison-like, for lack of a better term, that we would be better off sticking with remote learning?
So that conversation happened today. We've been reviewing the CDC guidance. And I think we'll talk a little bit about this when we get into the different task force, Mr. Pulowski. But just to throw a couple of examples out there, and I'm not going to throw the numbers at you, but just look at busing, for example. Now, so if you think about our busing contract, it's about, probably close to $9 million now. And I don't have the numbers in front of me. But we spend $9 million on transportation, we transport about 6,000 students. So if you're, and that's 42 big kids to a bus, 72 little kids, elementary to a bus. If we're doing 12 students to a bus, we're going to go from 46 buses to like 161 buses. Or we're going to be running buses all day, continuously picking up and dropping off students. Now, if there is a staggered stop or a staggered rotation where students are attending every other day, then you reduce that by half, which would limit the number of buses. So transportation is one of those that concerns us just because of the cost. We did hear from Commissioner O'Reilly today that they don't anticipate, they do not anticipate that 12 will be the number, as suggested by the CDC guidance, that that number may be a little higher. But again, we have to anticipate that there may be some added cost to transportation. So with retrofitting our schools, again, if we're doing it based on half the occupancy, that kind of lightens the load, so to speak, if it's a staggered start or staggered schedules. But I think a lot of the PPE equipment that we'll be purchasing will be a lot of Plexiglas, will be gloves, masks, thermometers, and maybe some retrofitting to our offices and common space if people visit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if we want to move on, all right. Okay, we'll move forward, but Carol, you're on, I'm sorry, Ms. Darney, you're on.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be better, and we'll let you go, Mrs. Darney, but to wait until the end, because some of all the questions may be answered by the time we get there. But I'll let you all decide.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It will probably, my question has to do with health and safety. So just to Mr. Cabral, because I can wait with my question. Mr. Cabral, are you anticipating a full presentation under each of the categories?
Today, we're going to provide you, we're going to have each member from the leadership team talk about the task force that they will be overseeing and about the work that they anticipate taking place there in the planning and who will be involved in those different groups.
Okay, I'll wait, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. Cabral, if you want to continue, it might be better to go to the end.
So transportation, which we just touched upon. Mr. Otavio Nelli will be our athletic director, will be leading that task force. Mrs. Perry will be overseeing operations, which will be the day-to-day activities in our schools, involving students, staff, families, anyone who utilizes our facilities. Mrs. Moynihan will cover facilities, she'll be leading that task force. So that'll fall under the maintenance and any retrofitting that may need to be done in our schools. Mr. Barada and Mrs. Mulrooney will oversee the task force reviewing education. But again, that'll be a pretty robust group that involve curriculum coordinators and coaches and other members from our educational community. Karen Regan, our nurse manager, will oversee the health and safety portion to make sure that our nurses have everything that they need and that our schools are safe. Mrs. Papa will be overseeing food services and what that will look like when we return. And then Attorney Mitchell and myself, we will oversee the family, community outreach portion and how all this work and how this messaging gets relayed to the members in our public. Obviously, we want to make sure that families feel safe and families know that we are doing everything possible to ensure the safety of their students as well as our teachers. So with that said, I'll turn things over to Mrs. Perry. She's going to cover transportation, because Mr. Otavio Nelli is not with us. So Mrs. Perry will touch upon three areas. She will touch upon transportation, operations, and health and safety, as Karen Regan, our nurse manager, is a direct report to Mrs. Perry.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. So we're going to begin a little bit talking about the transportation. We've also talked a little bit about including the athletics in along with that, because obviously, there's a lot of transportation that takes place with athletics. Desi did tell us today, as Mr. Cabral stated, that we will be getting some further guidance, hopefully by mid-June. But some of the areas of focus, and again, it's not limited to these areas of focus that I'm telling you now, but these will be some of the general areas of focus that we would begin to work on. So in regards to the transportation, we're going to be focusing on cleaning our buses, a disinfecting schedule and protocols, looking at possibly running multiple routes to minimize the number of students in each bus, possible staggering drop-off and pickup times so that we don't have several children huddling at a bus stop together, looking at possibly increasing the number of bus stops. One suggestion that Desi gave today that I thought was a good one was to send out a survey, and I think we'll definitely plan to do something like that. As we get a little closer, send out a survey to parents, because there are many parents that may choose to not put their child on a bus or decide to homeschool. And so we'll take a look at that, and that will definitely have an impact on our numbers. We'll look at the number of parents that actually provide their own transportation. We'll also continue to look at alternatives, as we have in the past, with GATRA and other such transportations. We'll encourage more walking and bike riding to school. We started the Safe Routes to School last year with Parker and Pole, so we may look to increase our connection with Safe Routes. We'll also be looking at protecting the drivers and the PPE that the drivers will need, social distancing on the buses in accordance with the CDC guidelines. And as Mr. Cabral said, that number, I think initially, we were told 12, but that number may be looking a little bit different. The overall bus protocols and ridership. One suggestion that I was thinking about was taking a good look and possibly auditing all of our bus routes. Our bus routes have not been changed in many years. And I think it makes sense to maybe take a look at the audit and take a look at the routes and see if there's anything we can do there. When it comes to athletics and transporting our students, we would be looking at protocols, team protocols. We also have to take a serious consideration with our van transportation. We have students that are transported as part of our out-of-district programs, our pre-K students, our McKinney-Vento and foster care students, students in our specialized programs. So we'll have to take a look carefully at how we're, what we'll be doing with our vans in addition to our buses. And then signage. And you'll find that signage comes up in almost every category that we're going to talk about tonight. So those, as I said, we're not limited to those topics, but those are some of the topics that we plan to investigate as we move forward with our transportation task force. Should I continue with the operations or? You mute?
You.
Sorry. Please cover your three areas right now, Mrs. Perry. So that'll be operations and health and safety in addition to transportation.
Okay, so the second area, as Mr. Cabral said, is involving operations, which is a very broad area. You may hear some of the topics overlapping. As I said, some of the topics do overlap. But I think initially, as most districts, we are looking to plan for three scenarios. That would include full remote, partial remote, or best-case scenario, full in school. So we'll investigate those three scenarios in regards to operations. That's kind of the large umbrella. And underneath that, we would be looking at student schedules. We would be looking at large group classes, such as physical education, band, chorus, looking at assemblies and possible into assemblies, whether they're held in classrooms or in different areas, alternatives to recess and lunch. And I think if you've done any reading. different areas, alternatives to recess and lunch. And I think if you've done any reading recently, you've seen that many, many people are suggesting the lunch in the classroom, but we'll continue to, to look at options. Even some possible alternatives to classrooms, for example, using outdoor space when available, possible use of large spaces in buildings such as cafeterias, gyms, looking at assigned seating, the placing of desks in classrooms, minimizing the number of students in each class. Another consideration would be our itinerant staff, staff that travels from building to building. So we would look at protocols and safety in regards to those staff members, overall health protocols in regards to our desks facing forward, the cleanliness of the desks, the use of masks, all of those areas, procedures if students or staff become ill, public access and engagement in buildings formerly known as our use of facilities, looking at a revision to our parents or guests visiting the building and the protocols that would take place. Again, one suggestion today from Desi would be to have specific lists and record-keeping of anybody who does enter the building so that in case we would need to contact them for any reason, we would be able to have all their information. The overall navigation of the building, which would be the traffic flow of students, taking a look at our teachers' rooms or teachers' lounges, looking at our entryways, our bathrooms, overall building protocols, practices for common gathering areas like lobbies and things like that. Also paying particular attention to our common touch areas, doorknobs, light switches, the possible, you know, the possibility of assigning students different entrances to the building, possibly scheduling restroom breaks. As I said, looking at hallways as one-way similar to things they've done in the supermarkets. I think it's really important to think about the dissemination of information at the building level. I know as a district, we have district-wide communications, but I think being very specific with our buildings and dissemination, the dissemination of information at the building level. I think it's important also for us to look at some of our policies in regards to attendance, for example, and maybe discouraging the perfect attendance, as we, you know, we've worked so hard with our attendance. But again, we look for guidance from Desi in regards to that. But in addition to that, developing checklists for students and families at each grade level that could include resources, promote facts about public health. I think it's really important to disseminate the fact from fiction, understanding the overall concept of social distancing. Again, signage, I think is very important. It's just like anything when we learn, when we have to learn a new way. For example, you think about parent pickup and drop-off. When a family's new to a school, we continually remind parents, this is how you do pickup, this is how you do drop-off. I envision many of our practices that we'll be incorporating will have a lot of that, communication, signs, repetition, so that people, it now will become a habit like it does with some of our other policies. Again, really important for accurate record-keeping of all those entering and exiting the building for contact purpose, you know, contact tracing purposes, they call it. So, operations is a huge umbrella, not limited to those topics, but those are some of the topics and some of the areas of focus that we will have in the operations task force.
Then, Mrs. Perry, if you could just touch on the health and safety piece, anything that wasn't repeated on the operations and transportation, please.
Sure. So the health and safety focus group will be led by Karen Regan. And again, it'll talk a lot about the entry into the building, specifically nurses' offices, accessibility, meeting the students' health needs will be the major focus of that task force, procedures if students or staff become ill following the Massachusetts Department of Public Health guidelines, pick policy enforcement, which would be supporting the parents and when to have the parents keep their child home, some, you know, clear guidelines for parents, also some support with siblings or household members who become ill, flow charts for parents so that they'll have an idea of when to send their children back to school or if they should send their children to school. A lot of health education would be done through the nurses' office, but also with our health staff in regards to hand-washing, coughing etiquette, social distancing. And we'll also spend a good amount of time with SEL supports for staff in that health and wellness focus group. And finally, the use of personal PPE, personal protective equipment for all students, staff, and nurses. So it's not a complete list, but those are the general points that we'll be focusing on with those three task forces.
And before we kick in, with the committee prefer that we cover the remaining groups, or does the committee have questions for Mrs. Perry on the three areas that she covered?
I think covering the remaining, maybe I'm wrong. Mrs. Fagan, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Mrs. Perry, I don't know if, if you said it and I didn't hear it, you spoke about the buses. What about the vans?
Yes, actually, I did talk about the vans. And again, the vans have, they hold seven students presently. And so we would be looking at the same retrofitting or the same protocols in regards to vans.
But that would greatly increase the amount of vans you would need too, because I mean, if you're, I, what I heard from the CDC report was on the big yellow buses, one student every other seat. That's crazy. And a van is just small, and I don't know how you can get more than two. I don't know how you keep them six feet apart. You know, I mean, it just to me, I agree with Nathan, I, oh, I'm sorry. I agree with Nathan. I, I'm very worried about the amount of money and the outlay of capital we're going to have to do to do all of these things. I think it's crazy. And not that I'm a big fan of home, I'm sorry. I want to take this phone off. I, it's tough being at home with too many distractions, but I'm concerned about the amount of capital we'll have to lay out to institute all this stuff. And now they're saying the hardest way to even catch this is from, from objects. So we're going to be sanitizing from now till the cows come home. That's a ton of money. And I'm really worried about the transportation piece because I, I know I spoke to Greg one day, even at the college level, Greg was talking about how many buses they'd need to transport teams and stuff like that. It just, it's, it's over the top for money that we don't have. And I don't know what good's going to come out of it, you know? And I just wish that cooler heads would prevail on some of this stuff. I mean, I went from one weekend market basket and having to wait for them to wipe down the whole conveyor belt to the next week, it was just throw it on. So I mean, we're all over the, you're laughing, Nate, but it's true. We're all over the place with this, and nobody really knows. And a lot of people now are talking about get these kids back in school. But if we're going to have to do it under, under the guise of all these, all these guidelines, I find it really, really scary. I, I'm just really afraid of what kind of money we'd have to spend. And I, I don't know if we can afford it. But that's the concern, because I know, I know on any given day when I've gone by Friedman, there's like 20 vans out there. And if you can only put two or three in there, you're going to need a lot of vans.
That was, that was part of.
The other thing, John, too, is we have a lot of parents that already dropped their kids off, which compounds the problems.
Well, I think that'll be, that'll be part of the work that we'll have to do will be to identify ridership and identify students who will be dropped off. And again, that's going to change, that's going to change our plans on our physical sites. I mean, think about those of you who are on the Mulcahy Construction Committee, that they were basing that on about 80, 85 vehicles dropping off students between Hopewell and Mulcahy. That number may change. That number may be, may be increased, which is going to change all the planning that went into the pickup and the drop-off of that building. So I anticipate that things are going to look very, very different. And we know anytime there's change, it's difficult for people to, you know, wrap their head around the change sometimes. Also know it's going to look very different, but as we've done all along, we'll continue to adapt and make the changes necessary to make this work. So I agree, we, we need to get out in front of this, which we have. And if we need to make any changes based on the guidance or the recommendations we're getting from our state and local health officials, we will. But I think it's very important that we begin, that we begin doing this work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Souza? Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Souza.
That's interesting. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I will get into the aspect of the budget because I just shake my head because it just seems to be adding up what we're going to have to do in the fall from now to the fall. I do, I do have a couple of comments on Kathy's presentation. You should look at my notes here. The CDC has guidelines, but our, our, what I would call BOSS, I would think is the Department of, the DPH, Department of Public Health in the local Board of Health. The CDC, the CDC guidelines are guidelines, but really, our local officials, whether it's state or local, could increase the standard rather than decrease the standard. Otherwise, the CDC guidelines, the state has a standard, and they, they could increase the CDC guidelines. So what I was, what, the reason I'm getting to all this is, boy, at what point do we know what the standard is?
So I agree. We started our work with the CDC guidelines, but you're absolutely right, Mrs. Souza. I think when it comes down to actual things that we'll be doing here in the city, we need to have the approval of the Board of Health. And that is really kind of would be, I guess, our yard sticker, our guideline.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the good standard because our local Board of Health would then get the standards from the DPH, Department of Public Health. So, yeah, I don't, I don't want to stretch to that tail. And I certainly think the other thing is, and I won't believe it, but the point, because we've got a lot to talk about tonight, and of course, next week's the budget, and, and we'll, we'll go through all of that next week. But I think the key to this is going to be the communication between the bill, from the central administration of the buildings to make sure everyone's set the same standard, and also this communication, obviously, with the parents, because the, the guidelines are going to be stringent and, and no one's going to understand. We're, we're going to have to really, really make sure that the public understands what we, what is expected of us from the state and local officials. That's, that's, that's going to be tough. That's going to be a tough job. I, I, I'm kind of at a loss on how we're going to get all this work then for September or the end of August, for September, to be honest with you, the amount of people, even with the, this breaking it out by the amount of groups. And that's just my chiming in for a couple of minutes. I'll, I'll yield, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mrs. Doherty? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Palowski, did you have something?
Mrs. Doherty can go first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Nathan. Just a couple of comments, and some of them have already been raised, I think, to adding to the list is waste disposal, which we have been talking at length about recycling. And this pales, recycling pales in comparison to the level of waste disposal that we will have in front of us. And so it, it is, it is a serious problem, especially with the landfill decisions coming on down, coming on down the pike through the city council. The other is, and I was reading an article in the Globe today about, about testing, and it was Jeff Riley, I think, that was quoted, or maybe it was Paul Revelle, who indicated, just questioning, what happens if the CDC, Board of Health, Department of Public Health decide that every child has to be tested coming into the school? Every teacher has to be tested on a regular basis coming into the school. We need to build in those considerations as well. I think that it's really critical for us to have the context of the CDC, et cetera, within which we make our decisions. And I believe that the way in which we decide to educate our children going forward, at least in the short term, is really going to drive all of these other things. Clearly, if the decision is that we stay with remote learning for the time being, then we have a lot of time to plan these other things. And I'm not suggesting that we don't continue the conversation to be ready at such times. So it may not be September that we are open, but it may be later than that. So that is a consideration. And the other is personnel. So there are a lot of extra things that have to be done. While our personnel, whether they are in a hybrid mode or an in-classroom mode or in a remote mode, is still teaching, they're still keeping the grounds, they're still cleaning the buildings. Does that mean additional personnel in order to do all of the things that are essential to get done? So, yeah, I guess I get into the line of saying that for us, it's a conundrum. It's an expensive proposition for all of our school districts across the country and a, a big nut to crack. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
And the other piece I'll mention too, it would be our own personal responsibility as well. So there will be more ownership on the employee as far as some things that we, we may be required to do to ensure that we remain healthy and that those around those are those we come into contact with have clean environments to work and to teach in.
Thank you. And I just want to let everyone know that I'm writing your names in the notes as I see hands up. So if you see your name over there, then that means I saw you. Okay, Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Perry. I think you've done a good job illustrating how much work, how many different dimensions we have to consider for any of these plans. And if we, if we boil it down and it ends up that we've got three different options to look at, full remote, partial remote, or fully on back in school, I guess this is a question for Mr. Cabral. How do you envision us making that decision? And when do you think we're going to make that, when do you think we're going to have to make that decision by, regardless of the information that we get?
You're on mute, Mr. Cabral.
Wish I had a dollar for every time I did that. Yeah, a lot of it will depend on the guidance we receive from the state. So my biggest concern would be equity, and that's why we're beginning to look at if we did have to continue with remote learning, full remote learning, making sure that all students have access to a device, and then obviously making sure that the teaching and learning that's taking place is universal throughout the district. So as far as making decision, I would hope that we would make that decision sooner. And if we need to make it at a local level after we receive the guidance from the state, we'll make it at a local level. If it's not made far as at the state level. But what the commissioner did stress is Mrs. Perry stated, all of our plans, so again, even our send-off plans, to get the Board of Health, to have the Board of Health sign off on it. If we're, anything that we're planning to do that involves the public, involves our facilities, will require the sign, signing off of the Board of Health. So I would love to be able to tell you, Mr. Palowski, that we're going to go full, no in-person learning come September, but we just don't have enough information yet. So I would, I would like to say by the end of July, the latest that we make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one question. That was a very great, good presentation on all areas. There's one thing that I didn't hear you say, Mrs. Perry, what about the before and after school daycare for the students, for the parents that work? I didn't, did I miss that?
That would fall on, that would fall on the operations and facilities as well. So we will have to develop some protocols and some procedures for parents who utilize daycare in the morning as well as after school following the social distancing guidelines.
So, a lot of things that, and we don't know what we're going to do come September, but if in fact that we have kids go to school every other day or something like that, what happens to the days that the students may not go to school? We need to take all that into consideration too, right?
Yes. So thank you for bringing that up. In fact, I did, today in our discussions, we did talk about Donna Ross and including her in our operations so that we do have extended day. She is also bound by the EEC guidelines, and so she is, she does Zooms with them.
And so she is, she does Zooms with them quite often. So she gets a lot of her information from, you know, from that Commissioner, from the EEC Commissioner. So, but I did, and all of your comments have been really helpful and I've added them to my list. So that, as I said, it wasn't, these topics are not complete by there, I think, a good starting point and a good jumping off point. So thank you.
So when you say EEC, does that mean that, like now if the daycares aren't open, that our daycare will be open also?
No, the Early Childhood Commission, yes. Early Education Commission is what, that's Donna Ross, and extended day falls under that umbrella. Right now, the only daycares we have opened in the city is the one at the Y for essential personnel. Although, as another side note, we have included the Boys and Girls Club in our talks, and they're part of our task force as well. So we will continue to work with the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, extended care, extended day, because we do know that's a huge need for parents.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had comment about bus transportation, we've had comments about drop-off protocols. I can foresee that a lot of families that are entitled to busting are not going to feel safe with that option, they're going to want to self-transport. Are we going to make any effort to survey, to determine whether we need to be shifting from the transportation into the drop-off because of what demands might be?
Yes, we, we plan to administer a survey, where we'll collect that information.
Thank you. And Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor, this will be very quick. I've heard the three options, but there's a couple more options I think should be at least discussed, and I haven't heard it yet. And that is the option of coming back to school normal in September, and 10 days into the school year, there's a massive outbreak and we all go home again. And the other option is, one particular school building has an outbreak, and the other 12 are perfect. I haven't heard that tonight, I'm not expecting to hear anything about that tonight, but it's something that I discussed with Superintendent Cabral way back when, when I presented, I think, five or six different scenarios that we're doing at Bridgewater. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had those initial discussions, Mr. DeMello, as part of our operations procedure, exactly that, as you stated. Now, what, do we shut down all 13 schools, or 12 next year? If there's an infection or an outbreak, or do we just keep it contained to that one building? So that'll be part of our operations, and that'll also fall under our medical. And then obviously, if we are one-to-one at that stage, then we'll have to continue with remote learning. Then the other question will be for how many days? Will it be 14 days? Will it be five days? Will it require deep cleaning? So those will be protocols or discussions that we'll have within those different working groups. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Okay, so I think we can move on to the next, Mr. Cabral.
I apologize. So Mrs. Moynihan will cover facilities and food services.
And you are on mute, Mrs. Moynihan.
Sorry about that, my AirPods just died, so hopefully it'll stay. I apologize. Well, good evening, everyone. My first one that I'll be discussing is the facilities. Now, some of the things that Mrs. Perry did say does overlap, so I won't go ahead and bring those up, but please know that it is still falling under this domain. One of the biggest things that we all have been thinking about, and we did do this on a regular basis with the flu, is sanitizing. So one of the things that we did do in the winter, I, we went to place a, an order for the electro, electrostatic spraying system, the things that we've been using so far. And we only have three of them in the district, but we've been spraying them and disinfecting our schools with them. But what we have done is we placed an order, and hopefully they'll be coming in by June. So each school will have their own. So that will be helping to do each individual schools for sanitizing. Looking at posting signs, that's a big one. It also goes with operations, but posting signs coming into the building, in the bathrooms, in the cafeteria. And we've been in contact with our vendor to ask them what type of signs have other businesses and other schools have been approaching. So I just received a booklet on COVID-19 signage that other schools and other businesses have used. Of course, proper trash removal, getting the trash out of the classroom, out of the, out of the areas of offices and cafeteria. Retrofitting our offices, main offices, business offices, things where we're having the public coming into our office, making sure that we have the Plexiglas. Sinks, and our, one thing that we've heard too is possibly getting a clipboard and putting it outside of all the bathrooms and having every time the bathroom is clean or disinfected, they will have that on there, on the chart. So we know when a bathroom has been cleaned and disinfected. So that's what we have so far in facilities and limited to those. And that is just some of the things that we've looked at. The other one that I will be presenting on is food services. And this will be spearheaded by our Food Services Director, Karen Pappa. Now, Food Services, she's been doing a fabulous job with her team and feeding our kids right now in the areas of, in many of our schools right now. And as you know, we, we feed over 1,000 kids a day, which is amazing. And so what does our cafeteria look like? Well, she's been working with her staff and Area Food Services Director of thinking about, are we even going to have a cafeteria? Are we going to be serving food in our classrooms? So some of those things are being looked at as well. Is there other equipment that we may have to purchase? That will transporting, like you see in hospitals, where you transport the foods to the classroom, or in hospitals, into the rooms? Would we have to purchase those machines, those big areas, to transport food into the classroom? So if we do have food in the, if we have cafeteria, food in our cafeteria, how will our cafeterias look? Will we go ahead and space our, how are we going to space our children? Marking seats, making an X next to a seat, so kids don't sit on them. Having the six feet lines as they're going into going, getting their food. So these are many things that we're looking at now. And again, just the beginning of some of the things that we're looking at. And from now until probably even next month, we'll be changing that and adding more to that list.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. And one of the other items to think and that I'll just piggyback to is, again, it's going to look different. So you're most likely, if we did have to go to a hybrid or blend or a full remote, or if we were serving meals in the cafeteria, you're probably looking at pre-bagged or pre-boxed lunches being distributed to the student. So it's, it's going to look very different. I think Mrs. Moynihan hit the nail on the head. Our cafeteria space may not be utilized, depending on what the regulations are as far as serving meals to kids. So thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, did you have something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick note on, you mentioned signage. I would make sure that anything we purchase for signage, meet with Kevin Scanlon, get his approval, ADA, because the city has been going through the last couple of years of bringing everything up to code. And we certainly wouldn't want to go in the other direction. That's, that's all I have.
Absolutely, thank you.
Not seeing any additional hands, so I'll ask Mr. Barata and Mrs. Mulrooney, or Mulrooney, sorry, to discuss education regarding our regular education students and also our special education students.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to start off by emphasizing the fact that it's education for all students, not specifically for a certain type of student that we service. And remember now, we, we accommodate our high-achieving students, right down to our medically fragile students. So everything in between, we have to account for. So when we talk about education, I want to be very clear, saying that the work we do in this task force touches every other one, because we talked about the safety and certain components. And you almost talk about the, the three categories, full remote, the partial remote, and full in school. But what Mr. DeMello talked about earlier is situational remoteness, correct? We can have one building go down, but we're also going to have to take heart in what our nurses do, because we're almost going to have to trace families. Some of our children have differing last names, and realize that could be not just one building being affected, it could be multiple buildings. So we're going to have to prepare for an awful lot of scenarios. And, and that's why our task force is really going to be contingent upon deliverables. And, and really making sure that we address the many issues. And, and Mrs. Mulrooney will talk to the special needs component, but you also, for this conversation anyways, may also pull into the idea of how do we support our Title I students and our English language learners, where we also have to account for them. In two and a half weeks, DESI's providing us with some type of model of what it might look like. And again, that's great, but we're going to move forward on our plans. And briefly talking about this group, and I'll hit certain categories. I want to divide it into providers and consumers. The providers being our educators, what we do, and our consumers, students, and families. Because what we've learned during our experience of enrichment, to remediation, to new teaching is we have to provide technology one-to-one for every student. That means our younger children who did not have access to before, or is in much-needed technology, will need to be ramped up in their skills and nuts and bolts of how to use it. That also goes to our families, because we can't leave them hanging. If we're going to remote learning, how are we going to support parents as well? So later on in this little brief description of some target groups, I'm going to bring, I'm going to circle back to that. So if you bear with me. In this group, obviously, Ms. Mulrooney and myself. We also, in our category, is our IT Director, Karen Blinow, our Principal Hoy, Principal Delaney, our EL Director, Delilah Mendoza, obviously, school committee members, whoever opt into it, our eight-to-12 curriculum supervisors, our pre-K to seven coordinators, guidance representatives, parents, students, obviously, other teachers, and instructional coaches. What's going to take place? We're going to have to start off, obviously, research, bring us all up to speed. What other research is out there, what other school district is doing, whether it's national or international. Also reviewing the surveys that we already disseminated throughout the district about teacher feedback, student feedback, and parent feedback. Because a lot of those comments will help inform our work of what worked and what didn't work. So there's going to also be a component of research. Curriculum mapping is going to be huge. How are we going to resequence our curriculum maps based upon the March 13 shutdown? Also anticipating, we hope, guidance from DESI, just like they offered up the end of April about the essential standards which should be taught. I imagine they're going to provide us with some type of guidance along those lines. Again, we're not going to wait for that, we'll appreciate if it comes. But we're going to work internally of, okay, what do we have to do to put our children instruction back on track? Again, looking at, if we're going to be testing students in MCAS in late fall, winter, how does that impact them at the high school? And I know the high schools already started looking at their mapping system of how they're going to alter their instruction to recoup the loss which we know took place. So part of that curriculum mapping will also be fed into our assessments. Now, K7, we have map data, which we test the students in September, January, and June. So in the normal course of the year, our students would be testing anyways and look at regression from the prior year. This will definitely be important as to how then we can not only map, but also support the students moving forward as we go down this, this path, along with formative assessments that we have as an ongoing basis. So how are we going to monitor student growth? And then ultimately, how are we going to support that? So what does instruction look like? Whether we're in school, that's great, whether it's remote, whether it's that hybrid two weeks on, or one week on, one week off, which also will dovetail into professional development. Obviously, how do we support parents? How do we support students? How do we support teachers delivering content in a new way that can engage students? Because remember now, we spent a lot of time, two years ago, three years ago, talking about too much screen time. Let's move the kids away from screen, and now we're almost going the opposite way. So looking at our task force members, and also tapping into the college community of who's been teaching hybrid and such, and saying what works, what doesn't work. So we're going to have to get a lot of information from a lot of different people. And how do we support teachers, provide meaningful instruction? Not only remotely, but also face-to-face, because we have to be strategic in what we cover. Because I think we're going to have to get much more in lapse, that, lockstep with each other across the district, across grade, grade levels, and saying, you know what? We really need to maintain our focus. We need to provide high-quality assessment tools, high-quality instruction. But we can't do without quality professional development, and that's what we really need to do. Obviously, looking at grading practices, and obviously, coming out of the gate strong, clarity, and reinforce it so everyone knows what's expected of students, whether you're face-to-face or in a remote settings. We talked about professional development. SEL is going to be huge. How do you provide SEL support via the internet? And that's, again, it falls in some of the categories that Kathy Perry's working with, with the nursing stuff and guidance. What also, does it look for, for summer school? I know Mr. Cabral mentioned about that, there's some state grants coming up about summer school, but also vacation schools or vacation academies. It seems like the more we move ahead, the more we look back. Because as Mr. Cabral remembers, when we were middle school principals, we used to have vacation schools where we targeted students for specific skills, and we made it enrichment and such. And now it seems like the state is coming back and saying, hey, how can we do that now and support our students, which is going to come vital for us? Because the reality is, are we really going to have snow days? I mean, they're actually learning days, right? If they're all one-to-one, we can look at it that way. In vacation days, it might be, yes, it's vacation. However, if you want enrichment, we might be focusing more on incentives for students to come in and participate in that versus being a consequence of having a day off. And also, the, the connectivity with our faculties. How do we have back-to-school nights, which goes to safety, right? Again, how do we provide new teacher orientation? How do we interview for new teachers, right? Virtually and such. Parent-teacher conferences, what do those look like? And again, how do you make, or how can you provide more meaningful virtual staff meetings? And then that goes back to feedback to perhaps the, the teacher survey. So those are some bullet points. I, I really want to turn it over to Judy Mulrooney, who's done an unbelievable job with trying to work with the special education throughout this shutdown period. Judy?
Thank you, Chris. And as Mr. Barata said, when we are speaking of any of these things, because special ed is driven by state and federal regulations, there are certain things that we need to look at, but all of our students are included in everything that Mr. Barata spoke about. So a couple of areas of focus that I feel need to happen when we're looking at reopening is, the first thing we need to do is look at students' IEP goals and whether they were able to attain them, or there was regression. And that data is going to be important for us, because that's going to help us plan instruction for our students. The second thing that we need to look at is timelines. We were given an advisory on May 21st from the state about reaching out to parents to have conversations with them about working with us around timelines for students' meetings and evaluations. So as a district, we have been trying very hard to get our IEP meetings done. At this point, we have had 155 team meetings. So that means we're not having a timeline discussion with those parents. But we have 120 families that have chosen not to have a team meeting at this time. So that means when school starts, we're already 120 meetings into the year. So we're going to have to figure out how to have those discussions with parents and how to get those meetings running. The next area that we need to look at are evaluations. We have been unable to evaluate students at this point. So we have some testing that needs to be finished, and we're going to be getting requests for testing. So we need to follow up with that as well. So one of the things that we need to look at is the possibility of doing remote testing, if that's going to work. Another thing that we possibly need to look at is, do we create safe spots in our building to bring our students into testing? Maybe we need to look at some of our evaluators that are doing different tests, so it's not multiple people testing our, our students. Those are all things we need to consider. The last thing that we really need to focus on is compensatory services. As of right now, the guidance from DESI has been that a parent can request a meeting, and that we need to look on it, look at it on a case-by-case basis. But again, we're looking for more guidance from DESI. So I think that those are areas of focus that we're, we need to look at in special education if we're going to open the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And last but not least, I'll let Attorney Mitchell talk about some of the work that we'll be doing regarding messaging and communication as this, as we continue along this path of reopening.
Thank you, good evening. So I think Mr. Souza said it earlier, you know, that the key to all of this will be the communication that we're doing from central office to the buildings and central office to our students and families. So throughout all of this, our focus is going to be on thinking about what is the family, the ways that we can get information out to our families through social media access, through reaching out through our PTOs, as we've been doing, to making sure that we're communicating what's going on with Phase Four. And also to talk about what the extended day needs that operations will obviously be implementing, but what are those extended day and daycare options that are going to be available for our families too, with whatever decision is made around our education? So in that way, the, this task force is going to be implemented a little differently, where each of the members will be coming together as a task force to talk about these things, but they'll also but they'll also be identified as a member of one of the other task force too. So that way they can be sort of a point person to provide that information back to the communication task force so that we can make sure that we're providing accurate and up-to-date information on what's being done. And I mean, the structure of that is essentially thought to try to provide some, you know, we'll give specialized roles to the people that might make sense in those roles. For instance, Mr. Barata mentioned the IT Director. The thought would be to also have her involved in our communication task force where she would be sitting on the education task force, but she'd be able to give us that key information so that we could provide that out. You know, as a leadership team, we'll certainly be meeting regularly and providing that updated guidance, but we think it's important for our task force members to be doing that as well.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney Mitchell. So that covers the seven groups, the seven task force that we'll be putting together to continue along this path of what reopening or reentry will look like for the top public schools. I'm going to ask Wendy Devine after this meeting or sometime tomorrow to reach out to all of you to get your input as to which task force you would like to participate on, if you choose to participate on. I know some of you have already reached out to me and I will forward those emails to Mrs. Devine so that she knows where your interest lies. But I would ask Wendy to reach out to everyone so that if you do wish to participate, you know, we can get one, two or three task force that you'd like to serve on and we'll try to get you on one of your top three groups. So and the only other piece, are there any other questions regarding our task force before I cover the last piece?
I don't see any. Oh, Mrs. Doherty.
Just a real quick question. I'm wondering if you have a time certain within which you want this work done or is this on a rolling kind of conversation?
Yeah, I wanted this worked on yesterday, but we didn't hit that deadline. But it'll be, it'll be on an ongoing basis. I believe, I mean, to say that one is a priority over another, I think they're all equally important because I don't think we can do one without the other. So it's going to be, you know, continuous working, meeting and reporting back until we have that final document, which I'm hoping will be sometime, you know, sometime in July, early August, where we can have all our plans finalized and in place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last piece that I just want to share with all of you, I know it's, it's been a topic of much discussion. So Mr. Mattos and his team at the high school, they began distributing the high school swag bag, which I communicated to all of you over the weekend. So there was a very well thought-out plan to distribute the swag bags to the students. So Mr. Mattos had 166 seniors report to the high school today during half-hour intervals. I believe there was about 12 students, 15 students every half-hour that would arrive at the high school, grab their bag and then on the way out, there was an exit survey conducted by Mr. Mattos. So again, 93% of the students were able to retrieve their bags today. The 11 students who did not retrieve their bags, they are being contacted and will be scheduled to come back at another date. So if those numbers hold true, you're looking at about 30 students that we need to either, we need to either pay a special visits to or continue communication to ensure that they have every opportunity to participate in this virtual graduation. During the exiting out survey that Mr. Mattos was conducting with the students or their families in the car, one of the questions, the question that he was asking is, give me some ideas. What is it that you'd like to see take place in July? So there was a mixed bag, majority of the students, and I happened to be there for about 15 minutes listening to Mr. Mattos do some of these interviews. Again, this is just what I heard and based on what Mr. Mattos shared with me. Majority of the students were asking for some type of social gathering where they could hang out with their friends, sign yearbooks, maybe toss a frisbee, play some volleyball, almost like a beach day type activity where they could really socialize with their friends that they haven't seen in three months. Another suggestion was to do some kind of semi under the stars on the football field. So, so what we're thinking and what Mr. Mattos was thinking is maybe doing a combination of both. Having a typical, almost like a beach day setting on the, on the football field, having a couple hours of break, students can go home. If they wish to come back in their formal attire, they can come back in their formal attire, or they can come back in their shorts and t-shirt and hang out with their friends during the evening under the stars on the football field. And then obviously, we would, you know, just Mr. Mattos and I were just thinking out loud, if that's the consensus of the group to have some kind of a day-long event with a little break in between, I think that would be a great way to celebrate our seniors, you know, doing something that they want to do, which is spend time with each other. And then we can have different types of setups on the grounds, whether it's a mock stage where they can take those photos with their parents to emulate them walking across the stage, some other type of photo area. So I think we can put together something pretty creative and something fun utilizing the social distancing guidelines that we anticipate will be available to us after July 19th. And that concludes our update.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so Mr. Cabral, was that everything under your update? All those three bullet points?
Yes, the nation for the school committee members as they were in the last packet.
Okay, great. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So the Bloom Bus contract we need to discuss because we need to vote on that or not, we need to vote on it up or down. And then the other, the TEA supplement and supplemental MOA, it was not in the, it was in the, it was on an email to everyone, but we, they mixed up the MOAs when we received the hide copies. So in my recollection, we did vote on that at the last meeting. I just want to make sure that everyone is in agreement with that. We voted on that MOA at the last meeting. But we do need to discuss the Bloom Bus contract because we deferred that from the Finance and Law Subcommittee last week because we didn't have the contract ahead of us. So if Mr. Cabral could present that, that would be good.
So the Bloom Bus contract, pretty much what was negotiated, I think Mrs. Monahan did a nice job at speaking to it last week, was we were able to determine that based on the closure that Bloom should be entitled to about 30% of the operational costs. So on a daily basis, it costs Bloom $34,000 to transport all the students in the top public schools. So a third of the 34,000 would be about $10,200 per day is what we would owe them for the remainder of the school year. So based on that, we've been in school, we were in school 119 days times 34,000, which is about $4 million. And the remaining balance of 61 days times 34,000 would be about $2 million, which would be the balance for the remainder of the year. So a third of the 2 million would be about 600,000 that we would owe Bloom for the remainder of the year. And again, that would be to cover any of their overhead. The majority or the largest portion of their overhead had to do with staff, which they have laid off. So this will cover any expenses that they need to maintain in order to keep, you know, to be viable, should or when we return in the fall. So that was the agreement that was reached by the Tom Public Schools as well as the four other communities that utilize Bloom for the transportation services. The contract was vetted by Attorney Gay, so he did review the contract. He felt it was a good contract and there was nothing in the contract that he thought was omitted that should have been added. And his recommendation was to go forward with the contract after we had a chance to discuss the contract with the school committee.
Move the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
And have the superintendent sign the contract.
Okay, motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello, Mrs. Doherty, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral, Mrs. Monahan. I did have a chance to look at the MOA and I did do some research on the transportation budget of FY '20. According to what I found, our transportation budget is just under $8 million. And based on, I calculated 120 school days, you said 119, so it's pretty close. My estimation is about $800,000 that we owe the Bloom Bus Company. Now, we just talked extensively about future transportation costs and what we could incur based on social guideline, distancing and all that stuff. And whether it's 600,000 or 800,000, that's a lot of thousands of dollars. And there's a couple of things on the MOA that I took particular interest to. And of course, I'm looking at this a little bit more closely because I really don't want to get burnt like we did with EF Tours and that's still bothering me. But anyway, there's a couple of items, Section Five and Section Six, that specifically states that if, should the Bloom Bus Company get some relief, that they inform us. And I don't know how, how we can enforce that, how we can even monitor that. So that's two items. And more specifically, the last item that stands out very, very blatant is item number 10, that we are to give them a, negotiate a further MOA for the readiness of services by August 1. And that's not a reasonable date because we don't know what's going to happen on July 15th or July 30th, or if it's going to continue on past August 1st. So I think that August 1st date isn't reasonable at all. So again, I beg my fellow members to understand that I'm very sympathetic to Bloom Bus Company. I'm very sympathetic to the drivers. They do an outstanding job. I know their accident rate is very, very low or none. I haven't heard of anything. And I really, really appreciate that they're taking good care of our children, but 600,000 or 800,000. And I do not support this MOA at all. Thank you.
I can speak to points five and six real quick, Madam Mayor. So with points five and six, we were the ones, and I don't want to take full credit, but we did remind H&amp;L Bloom, when the stimulus funds for small businesses were available, we did remind H&amp;L Bloom that they could access those funds. And if there was additional stimulus funds, we would advocate and push or encourage them to utilize those, utilize those opportunities just for the simple fact that that would mean money returned to Tom Public Schools. So that is something that we would watch and work with them and provide them support as we did with the initial round. Again, that's taking full credit, but we did make them aware and did press to ask if they were going to take advantage of that funding. And regarding bullet 10 or item number 10, if we're getting to the point on August 1st where we don't know what the new school year is going to look like, then obviously we would reach out to them and say that we can't answer that question or we have to, you know, extend this out further until we know for sure or when we know what the new school year will look like and if transportation will be in the mix when we do return.
Mayor, if I may just conclude my point. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you reminded the Bloom Company that they could file for relief, but I'm pretty sure that the Bloom Company has, you know, accountants that probably steer them in that direction. I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I watch a lot of city council meetings and I take a lot of interest in our city, of course, like all of us here. And it reminds me of TIFs. And we give out TIFs and you know, next thing we know, the company's not, you know, at that level of employment numbers that they're supposed to be and there's no monitoring in place because we don't have the resources to monitor it. We have the great city, we do a lot, we do a lot with less and our school department does a lot with less too. So how do we monitor number five and number six? And you know, if anybody wants to, you know, me to read it out loud, I can. But you know, again, I wish, I wish the Bloom family, the Bloom Company get relief from the, from the federal government or the state government, whatever government CARES Act that's out there to help small businesses like the Bloom Bus Company. But we just don't have the ability to monitor it. So I would, I would think that it'd be, how should I say, more beneficial that they come to us and say, listen, we got X amount of dollars and now we're short 200,000. Can you help us with 200,000, not the 600 or the number I came up with, 800,000? That's, that's my way of thinking as a business perspective. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and, and again, I won't get into detail as far as what percentage they started, what percentage we started at, as far as, as far as the reimbursement that H&amp;L Bloom was expecting was much higher than what was negotiated, finally, much, much higher. So again, by us doing our due diligence and reminding them of what they had at their disposal, if we was able to reduce that number greatly and by pushing back on them saying that these costs were not justifiable, we were able to reduce the rate. So I feel good about the work that we've done. I also feel good about the rate that we're paying them based on rates that I've learned from other communities. I think what we did was very fair to Bloom and it's also very fair to Tom Public Schools to ensure that we have a transportation vendor when we return.
Thank you. I'll set, I'm sorry, just trying to read my screen. Mrs. Doherty?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question about how, how do we, is that 600,000, 800,000 actual cash in hand? Is it a credit against the next contract? How do we, do we line it in our budget? How do we recover that amount of money if, if it is actual money?
We don't, that's money that we owe Bloom for the remainder of this year.
Okay, so, but, but the contract was for 2 million. We owe them that amount of money. So the rest of the, our money is in our budget unexpended.
It's been, it's been allocated or moved around to offset all the deficits in our budget.
Whatever the 12, 1.2 million available to us, okay. In the item that Mr. DeMello brought up, number 10, the August 1st date, do you believe that's a reasonable date or do you have a recommendation to amend this contract to change that date or put in language that makes that fluid?
I think that date right now, based on what we learned today is reasonable, that we should know by August 1st what the new year is going to look like. For us not to know by then will make the summer very, very challenging to prepare. Because if we have to start changing schedules or altering schedules in the middle of August, it'll be very difficult with the, you know, just thinking audition with 8,000 students, never mind a district that's double our size like Brockton with 16,000 students. So I would think by August 1st, we should have a good, a good idea of what the upcoming school year is going to look like.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Palowski, did you have something?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So yeah, so I think I would echo the concerns of August 1st. So you mentioned earlier that we would, with or without guidance from DESI, make our decisions on full remote, full school by the end of July. I guess if we have to negotiate a new contract with Bloom by August 1st, we might need to make our decision more like, you know, mid-July. But my, my major question about the Bloom contract is in line eight. How exactly are they going to do safety training and professional development when they've laid off most of the drivers? That didn't really make any sense to me when I read it.
Oh, you put yourself on mute. You had it right first. You're on mute.
Sorry. Sorry. So as far as the safety care and a lot of the training that we provide to Bloom, that's something that we do. So while their drivers are laid off, that is something that, that is a good question that I can't answer at this point. So I will find out from Bloom how they plan to continue training their drivers. But when they do bring their drivers back, all their drivers have to undergo, I believe they have to undergo, you know, CPR training, administering EpiPens, how to harness the students with using the harness vests. So there is much training that we provide. Mrs. Perry does SEL training with our drivers. So once they have their drivers back, whenever it is they decide to bring them back, which could be the next fiscal year or whatnot, when they do bring their drivers back, they are responsible, part of the current contract they have in place to make sure that they are trained and some of that training we provide them.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Souza and then Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support this. Oh, Christine, I thought you were talking. I'm sorry. I'm going to support this. This was an agreement with multiple districts that are all Bloom contractors. We've had a long history with Bloom. I've sat on two four-year contracts that we've had with Bloom and I think that they're a good company. Certainly I looked at this contract as trying to protect our interest. And in item number, line item number nine, there's a clause in there that I think protects our interest and that is Bloom agrees to provide the documentation to the district in order to demonstrate compliance with this MOA memorandum of agreement when requested. So if there's anything in there that the district finds that we want to double check or, or there's a, there's a, there's an issue, we can go back and ask them for the documentation. So I'm going to support it. I think it's a good MOA. And again, it's a, if we have to go back, that August 1st date has to change a little bit. It's, we just do this, it's not, it's not a new contract. We still have, we're still in the, we're still in the current. We still have, we're still in the, uh, we're still in the current contract, which is about forty, fifty, sixty pages lo, uh, fifty pages long. This is a memorandum of agreement. We just changed a few things and everybody agrees and is happy and moves on. So I, I certainly think, uh, uh, we need to have a vendor in place, ready to go. We have a contract. This is just a memorandum of agreement to modify it a little bit and so I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
I'm sorry. This place is like Grand Central Station today. I'll be glad when we can go back to regular school committee meetings without all these distractions.
Miss your brownies.
Huh?
Miss your brownies.
Yeah, I know. Um, I have a question about that, that section five on that. Apparently you're looking for Bloom to, to try to find some relief from what they suffered as a result of this and we have diligently applied. I, I don't know why a word like diligently gets put into, into that. It reminds me of A Few Good Men when the woman strenuously objects. I don't know if that's a legal term, but how do you know if they're diligently applying for anything?
So again, as I, as I stated earlier, when we were in the initial phases of bargaining this with Bloom, uh, without the support of the four other communities and without the support of Attorney Gay, um, there was no reference to the CARES Act or no reference to stimulus funding. That was something that we suggested or we mentioned. And I know they have their own accountants who would look into that, but when they're starting at a certain percentage and also looking to potentially apply for some of this stimulus money, it didn't make sense for them to receive full payment for services not rendered in addition to any stimulus funds that they would receive. So if we learn that there is going to be additional funding, I would reach out to Mr. Bloom or Mrs. Monahan. We reach out to their business manager or we would have Attorney Gay reach out and say, hey, here's an opportunity for you to apply for additional fundings, which would then free up funds with the school department that we could either have returned back to appropriation or apply as a credit to the following fiscal year. So I think, I did think it's something that we would encourage them to do, not just to sit back and, and rest, uh, on the funding that we have provided them to close out this fiscal year. So I think it's part of it is on us to, you know, do our due diligence to make sure that they are going after funds that they're entitled to as well as, you know, making sure that they are, or doing our best possible to make sure that they are going after those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are you all set, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote on it? Okay, there's a motion in a second and, um, we'll do that on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
I think everybody's muted. Oh, muted, all right, wait a minute. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Oh.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay, all set.
So one nay, the motion passes. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're on this subject, I'd like to, uh, take off on Mr. Souza's point on item number nine, uh, and make a motion that since that is on the radar, that we have monthly updates from Bloom to find out how they're progressing with item number five and item number six and we, you know, at least, at least through the beginning of the school year, uh, see if that, they can give us updates on, uh, relative to item five and number six. I'd like to have that in the form of a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
No.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Set.
One nay, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, are we all set? All right, uh, critical items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. Mrs. Almeida and then Mr. Palowski.
We had one more, um, agreement that needed to, we need to authorize the agreement to sign the.
Mrs. Almeida, we, uh, we voted on that at the last meeting.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And because I know that because right as we were doing it, I signed the document. It was voted on.
Okay, great, so we're all set with that one.
Just, just so everyone's clear on what happened. We just had the wrong document in the last packet, but we had, the document was emailed to everyone. So we, we, we ended up did voting on it, but it got slipped into this one just so we make sure everyone had a hard copy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are on critical items not reasonably anticipated. So, Mr. Palowskis?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. Um, my question is regarding, um, grading during remote learning and some feedback, uh, that I, that I got from some parents and teachers. So, uh, the question is, when was the K through seven grading policy meant to be communicated to the teachers and why, why was it communicated, uh, why was it not communicated to all teachers before it was communicated to parents?
Can you repeat the question, please? You were in and out.
Oh, sorry. Um, so, uh, when was the K through seven grading policy meant to be communicated to our teachers and why was it not communicated to all of the teachers before it was communicated to parents?
Yeah, so what we learned or what's been brought to our attention, Mr. Palowski, uh, was that the communication was sent to principals, uh, as principals are working back in the buildings or working remotely from home, the communication was not disseminated in a timely manner to our teachers as it was to our parents and the public. So that was something that from central office to the principals and from principals to the, to the teachers did not happen. So that's something that Mr. Barata recognized and we discussed this morning and then moving forward, we'll make sure that anything that we send out gets communicated to principals and then to teachers, uh, so that teachers are aware and also parents are aware.
Okay, thank you.
It was just, it was just a timing issue on our part.
Okay, uh, that, that, that's understandable, so.
But the, the grading, the grading and the participation was discussed with the union leadership and it was also discussed with the union executive board and was also discussed during our joint labor management committees, which met, uh, last Friday. So we did, uh, share that with the union and made some edits based on the feedback we received from the union before we pushed it out to our parents.
Okay, and so that leads me into, um, the grading policy for the high school. Um, I, I do not, that has not been communicated to, uh, has not been communicated to parents yet, correct?
So the high school grading, I worked on a PSA with Mr. Barata over the weekend and we recorded something and Mr. Jakes is in the process of editing. So the PSA should be going out. Uh, I told, I asked Mr. Jakes if we can get it out by Friday the latest and Mr. Jakes is hopefully going to have it out tomorrow. So, so we should get that out regarding what the grading will look like at the high school for students in grades eight, ten, eight, nine, ten, eleven, as well as for our seniors.
And so that policy has already been communicated to the teachers?
It should have been communicated to the teachers based on what we shared with the high school because the high school created their grading criteria that we would use for this remote learning process and then share it with the teachers at the high school level. So that should be all set at the high school. Uh, if not, if you're aware of something, then I'm not, as far as the particular department or particular teachers that need to be informed and need this communication, you can let me know and I'll work with Mr. Matos to get the message out to those departments or those individuals. But as far as I know, the high school created it and the high school shared it, uh, after they received our approval.
Okay, I, I guess I would just suggest based on the fact that we had a communication issue, uh, with the elementary, we probably just want to make sure we don't have the same thing, uh, with the high school. And then I guess, I guess finally on that, um, I, I, I guess I wish we could have had this grading policy, um, earlier and, um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, i- i- if we had a grading policy in place earlier, I think it could have helped, um, to get some of these students more invested in the remote learning, um, if they fully understood the consequences of their, um, participation.
I would agree and I think part of it, I agree wholeheartedly and that's one of those lessons that we're learning as we go through this remote learning work. What was also frustrating was, and I think Mrs. Almeida mentioned it earlier, which is something that we are realizing now that we can't continue to wait after DESI to provide us with the guidance when you have eight thousand students and six hundred teachers, you know, doing this work. So that was one of the reasons why, uh, the high school, uh, DESI had, I'll use the high schools as an example, DESI had mentioned that they were going to provide us with guidance and we were waiting for that guidance to ensure that whatever the high school created, we came up with aligned with DESI's criteria. But as the date came and went and there was, and we were approaching graduation day, uh, we were approaching decisions to be made regarding graduation, we decided to just go ahead and approve what the high school put together and get that out sooner than later, then shortly after DESI released their guidance. So again, we're learning through this, through this process and I, and as I've stated all along this, since March thirteenth, the road wasn't going to be smooth. I know there were going to be bumps along the road and I knew there were going to be things that we were going to have to adapt and mistakes that were going to be made that we'll learn from. And I feel like this is one of those areas where we're learning and it's making us stronger as a team and we'll be more proactive and be more aggressive going forward to make sure that we have plans in place and then make corrections and changes if needed. Uh, so again, overall, yeah, there are a lot of things that we could do better and that these, this is one of those items that we'll learn from. The secret is not to make the same mistake twice.
Absolutely. And, and sorry, just one, one last question, uh, Madam Mayor, if you'll allow me, um, on, uh, on the issue of the senior plans, um, so, uh, alternative plans for midsummer, so it sounds like there's some ideas going back and forth. Um, when do you think is a reasonable time that, um, that you think some of these plans might be presented to the school committee?
I'm thinking next week. Mr. Matos has two more days of pickups, so that's about another two hundred and three hundred and twenty some odd students going through the high school. So after he's had a chance to personally speak with all those students and get their information, I should have a good idea of what they plan to do next week. I thought the idea of doing a, a full day with a little break in between was pretty clever and I think it's a great way for students to really spend the day with all their friends, you know, morning, afternoon and into the evening, under the stars.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
One thing, Madam Mayor?
Yes, uh, uh, then Mrs. Almeida, then Mr. DeMello.
Thank you. Um, I just don't want to give anyone false hope that's watching this. The plan at the high school is pending, I mean, loosening of, of the social distance guidelines as well as if you're adhering to the social distance guidelines. So if they, if they can't be met, the game's off. So we, we do the best we can. I, I, I'm, I'm getting pretty excited about the plan, but, um, there's still criteria that has to be met. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. If I'm off balance, just tell me to be quiet. This school committee has norms and beliefs. And norms and beliefs are that we're at the school committee people when we're not the school committee table and we're not school committee people when we're individual, even though the community thinks that we are. I for one, don't feel that we, as school committee people, because of the perception that citizens take, should be posting on social media what's going on in our school department. We have this network, they can contact the chairman themselves, so they can cha, contact the superintendent of schools. It's not up to us as school committee people to post on Facebook and Twitter and all those other, that I don't even know half of them, what's going on, when only certain people on the school committee know what's going on and the others don't. The superintendent is very good to try to keep everyone informed and that's part of our norms and beliefs. And I don't feel that grading or anything else like that, that hasn't been distributed to every single person and every single teacher and every single party that's involved be put on Facebook. So it becomes a big discussion between parents and teachers and everyone else. And I, I for one was very taken aback when I saw that. So I would just caution everybody to be careful what they say because it just is a reflection on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeMello?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I guess the trillion dollar question, because million doesn't buy anything and billions doesn't do much more, uh, based on Friday's DESI communication regarding July nineteen and outdoor ceremonies, uh, will there be a high school graduation for the Tom Public Schools outdoor based on the DESI guidelines set forth last Friday sometime after July nineteen through August?
So based on the initial feedback that we received from the students today, a majority of the students that were responding, Mr. Matos, were more interested in having a social gathering with their friends versus an outdoor graduation.
Okay, so we, we, we had surveys, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, through you, uh, we had surveys done, uh, we had a very, how should I say, minor difference in percentages of what one wanted, the other one wanted. Now this survey is done by the headmaster, uh, very informally with cars shuttling by that the students don't want a graduation now, they don't want a formal cap and gown ceremony on the football field, for example, on an outdoor venue because it has to be outdoor.
Yeah, based on the five.
That's, that's the conclusion?
Based on, again, he's not done, he has two more days and if you, and if we need to get more detailed information, we can get more detailed information. But the five students that I witnessed today, four of them said they just want to hang out with their friends, sign their yearbooks, have more of a social. There was one family that came through together with that family asked if they would like to see an outdoor graduation. So I did stop doing some mockups on the football field to see what that would look like and I believe we could fit about a hundred and sixty-six students, uh, social distance and I have to go back and check, uh, on the football field at a time. So you're probably looking at at least two, maybe three things for an outdoor graduation on our football field. And then we'd also have to, uh, probably take into account maybe two members, uh, per family if we were to invite people and sit in our bleachers. So I'd have to take a look at that or we'd have to take a look at that. And then we'd have to take a look at the social guidelines regarding the use of restrooms in other facilities as well. So that's something that, again, based on what we were hearing today, students were not conveying that as a want. Uh, they were more interested in having some type of a social gathering and then an evening event to kind of cap it off. They're more interested in being, saying goodbye to their friends.
Very well, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, looks like we're all set. Could it be? All right, uh, there's no press time and adjournment is next.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, roll call please, Mrs. Fagan.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I was had done mute. Okay, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?[1788.83]